Good evening, everyone. Today is April 24th, 2023, and this is a legislative agenda for the Salisbury City Council. I want to welcome everybody. A couple of announcements in case of emergency. I ask everyone to please remain calm. We would exit out these doors and take a right down the hallway and go down the stairs. If that way is blocked, we would take a left, go down that way, and down the stairs. If there is an emergency, please do not use the elevators. We will, at this time, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Greg Carlson here? Yes, he is. All right, at this time, we will have Pastor Greg Carlson from the Park Seventh-day Adventist Church to provide us with our invocation.
Thank you, sir. It's power yes. Father God, we thank you for the privilege of living in a free country where we can gather in meetings like this, hear the concerns of the community. Thank you for the great city of Salisbury, for the men and women who work to keep us all safe in this community, and we pray that tonight you would guide in this meeting as we discuss the things on the agenda. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. One more announcement while people are coming in. If you wish to make a public comment tonight at the table, you may sign up, and please hand that to our Assistant City Clerk Julie English, and we will put you in the order that I get them. Next up is a proclamation from Mayor Jack Heath.
Thank you, Mr. President. This proclamation has special meaning for my family. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a neurological disorder in brain that affects anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background, and is significantly more common among boys than girls. And whereas people with ASD have varying levels of social differences, interests, repetitions, sensory sensitivities, emotional regulation, perception, and executive functioning, and whereas this lifelong development condition typically appears during early childhood and currently has no single cause. And whereas rates as high as 1 in 54 children are diagnosed with ASD in the United States, and whereas on December 18th, 2007, in Resolution 62/139, the United Nations General Assembly set April 2nd of each year as a time for states to raise awareness about people with ASD and to support the ongoing research efforts of finding new ways to improve their wellness and inclusion. And whereas across the nation during the month of April, Autism Acceptance Month formally recognizes the individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety, as well as to support families as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can bring. Now, therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim 2023 as Autism Acceptance Month in our city, and urge citizens and residents to help recognize, support, promote, and appreciate each individual with autism spectrum disorder. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I will call for a motion to adopt the legislative agenda for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
The President, I'd like to... Do you have to do everyone aye? Do I have to all agree on that before I do my...
No. Now, if you're able to...
Okay. President Boda, I'd like to amend... I make a motion to amend the agenda to include public comments prior to ordinances 2803 and 2804, so we can hear public comments on those matters before the council...
All public comments, or just...
Should we do public comments for the...
Just the entire?
It sounds... It seems like there's... For the fire and... Yeah, the fire department ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second to that motion.
Any questions or comments about the motion? All those in favor of amending the agenda to move the public comments before ordinance number 2802, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then, at this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the legislative agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the March 27th, 2023 council meeting minutes, April 3rd, 2023 work session and special meeting minutes. Resolution number 3251 approving the appointment of Olivia Wackett to the Sustainability Advisory Committee Green Team for term ending April 2026. Resolution number 3252 approving the appointment of Sandeep Gopalan to the Board of Appeals for term ending April 2026. Resolution number 3253 approving the reappointment of Jeremy Woolfer to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending April 2026. And we have a manufacturing exemption request for Maytech for their equipment purchased in 2020 and 2021, and a manufacturing exemption request for Smith's Interconnect for equipment purchase in 2021.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
None.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 324.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Throw.
Yeah, I just pulled it up. Thanks. and equipment lease agreement between the City of Salisbury and the Wycomica County Board of Elections, whereas the City of Salisbury, Maryland believes it is in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Salisbury to delegate authority to the Wycomica County Board of Elections to conduct city elections. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Salisbury hereby approves a two-year service and equipment lease agreement between the City of Salisbury, Wycomica County Board of Elections, a copy which is attached hereto as Exhibit A and authorizes Acting Mayor John R. Heath and Council President Muir W. Boda to execute this agreement on behalf of the City of Salisbury.
Any questions or comments about Resolution number 3254?
None.
None.
All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution number 3254, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2789 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members of public. Ordinance number 2789, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to set fees for the newly created Board of Appeals and to amend and supplement the fee schedule for FY 2023. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments on ordinance number 2789?
No.
None.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2789 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2790 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2790, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend authorized positions to include an additional event coordinator position for the Arts, Business, and Culture Department. Again, this is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments about ordinance number 2790?
None.
All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2790 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2791 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Get that one to... Megan, yeah, she was the first... Yeah.
Ordinance number 2791, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the National Endowment of the Arts, NEA, for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $10,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with the 81st National Folk Festival. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments on ordinance number 2791? Hearing... Okay, hearing none. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2791 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2792 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moving right along. Ordinance number 2792, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $20,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with the 2023 Maryland Folk Festival. Again, this is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2792 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2793 for first... For second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2793, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Arts Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $4,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with bundle up and get outside. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments?
None.
All right. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2793 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2794 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2794, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to transfer from the parking fund and appropriate funds for the parking fund automation project and the parking capital project fund. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2794 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2795 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2795, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomica County Local Behavioral Health Authority for the purpose of accepting community mental health services, COVID relief block grant funds, in the amount of $12,562, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the homeless services case specialist position. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I just am looking at this and just want to make everyone aware that it's about $46,000 plus thousand dollars in grant money that we have received to help the city with everything from arts and entertainment to homeless services. So that's a pretty nice chunk of change that the city is very fortunate to have employees that constantly seek money, and it comes back into the city. So that's... I just want to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. No other questions or comments? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2795 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2796 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2796, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate additional funds required for the filter project. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve... I'll call for the question. To approve ordinance number 2796 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2797 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Who's that? Megan?
Ms. Angela.
Ordinance number 2797, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget, whereas the city has surpassed what was originally budgeted for gasoline in the fire department, and whereas the city's fuel budget has not kept up with the inflated price of gasoline seen during FY 23, and whereas the fire department would use the funds to continue to operate through the remainder of FY 23 without impacting services, and whereas there are insufficient funds available in the FY 23 fire department budget to cover the required expenses, and whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury. Section 1 of ordinance 2791 reads, "The City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2023 general fund budget being hereby is amended as follows: A) increase the current year surplus account 01-000-469810 by $45,000, and B) increase the Salisbury Fire Department's gasoline account, which is 24035-556204, by that same amount, which is $45,000."
Questions or comments on this item?
That's just another example of how things are exponentially increased since originally budgeted.
I'll entertain a call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2797 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2798 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2798, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $500,000, authorize the mayor to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Railroad Avenue Investments LLC, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate the aforementioned funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with the Union Railway Station stabilization project, whereas the 1913 Union Rail Station is a building of historical significance in the city and in the state of Maryland, and whereas Union Station has fallen into disrepair and is located in and among the bladed area of Railroad Avenue corridor, whereas the city's rail-to-trail project and the city bicycle master plan extends the bicycle trail system into the Railroad Avenue corridor, making this a prime area for redevelopment, and whereas the city desires to stabilize the structural integrity of Union Station and to restore the building to allow for the resumption of commercial enterprises and uses, as well as the creation of Comfort Station along the Salisbury Rail Trail, and whereas coupling the rail-to-trail extension with the rehabilitation of Union Station will contribute to the revitalization of the Railroad Avenue corridor and surrounding community by promoting public safety, improving a blighted neighborhood, revitalizing a historically significant district, and creating additional cultural activities and jobs, whereas the City of Salisbury in July 2022 submitted a Maryland State Revitalization Programs Grant Application to DHCD for financial assistance in carrying out community development activities specifically to provide assistance with the stabilization of Union Station, whereas DHCD, a principal department of the state, has awarded a strategic demolition grant fund in the amount of $500,000 to the city referred to as grant funds, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with DHCD defining how the grant funds are to be expended, and whereas the city is subgranting the grant funds to Railroad Avenue Investments LLC to perform the restoration in accordance with DHCD directives, and whereas the city must in turn enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Railroad Avenue Investments LLC defining how the grant funds can be expended, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract which requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of this ordinance reads that Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development on behalf of the city for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $500,000. Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a subrecipient grant agreement with Railroad Avenue Investments LLC for the purpose of expending these grant funds. And Section 3, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget is hereby amended as follows: A) increase DHCD revenue account number 12800-423300-XXXX by $500,000, and B) increase subrecipient Railroad Avenue Investments LLC expense account number, which is 12800-569314- XXXX by that same amount, which is $500,000.
Any questions or comments?
Just want to comment on the huge amount of this grant and what a difference this is going to make in that area. It's a part of the city that has just been neglected for far too long, and this historic building really deserves to be restored.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2798 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2799 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Michelle got in there. I thought I heard her.
Week tide.
Okay.
Whichever one.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah. I'm doing the same thing.
Ordinance number 2799, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $25,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with an event fund for the Main Street District, whereas the City of Salisbury in June 2022 submitted a Main Street Improvement Grant Application to the Department of Housing and Community Development, a principal department of the state, for financial assistance in carrying out community development activities specifically to include assistance with creating an event fund for events held in the Main Street District, and whereas DHCD has awarded Main Street Improvement Grant Funds to the city in the amount of $25,000, and whereas Section 7-29 of the City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury. Section 1 of ordinance 2799 reads, "Acting Mayor Jack Heath, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $25,000 to be allocated for assistance with events funds for the Main Street District. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby is amended as follows: A) increase DHCD revenue account number 10500-423601-XXXX by $25,000, and B) increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXXX by that same amount, which is $25,000."
Any questions or comments?
I would like to say this, and I do concur with Angela and Michelle. If you could look at the total amount of grants that we receive, the city receives during just this period of time, it's overwhelming, and we have wonderful department heads and wonderful departments, and they go for the grant money, and we're glad that they do because then it saves our citizens' monies as well.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2799 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. This time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2800 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2800, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Chapter 1.08 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Election Board and Chapter 1.12 entitled City Campaign Advertising and Finance to adopt recommendations made by the City of Salisbury Election Board, whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values and promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city, and whereas the mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code annotated local government article, Section 5-202, as amended, to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as mayor and council deem necessary to assure good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city, and whereas the mayor and council may amend the Salisbury City Code pursuant to the authority granted in it in Section SC 2-15 of the Salisbury City Charter, and whereas the mayor and council find that amendments to Chapter 1.08 and Chapter 1.12 of the city code are desirable to update and clarify the code with respect to the City of Salisbury Election Board and provisions governing city campaign advertising and finance, and whereas Maryland state law requires each local board of elections to refer to absentee ballots as, quote, mail-in ballots, end quote, and absentee voting as, quote, mail-in voting, and whereas on January 6th of 2023, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in public session to review potential amendments to Chapter 1.08 and Chapter 1.12 of the Salisbury City Code to offer advice and recommendations with respect to such amendments to mayor and council, and whereas on April 17th, 2023, mayor and council convened in public session to review potential amendments to Chapter 1.08 and Chapter 1.12 of the Salisbury City Code resulting from the advice and recommendations of the City of Salisbury Election Board, and whereas the mayor and council have determined that amendments to Chapter 1.08 and Chapter 1.12 of the Salisbury City Code as set forth below shall be adopted. So what we have here is Chapter 1.08 of the Salisbury City Code is hereby amended by adding the bolded and underline language and deleting the straight-through language as follows. So between lines 46 until we get to Chapter 1.12, which is found on line 377, I will just highlight for council what the changes are. There are primarily three umbrella changes. That is cleaning up the reference to... That is cleaning up the reference to the board to be consistent. It will now be referred to as the city of Salisbury Election Board. Changing all references to absentee ballots, to mail-in ballots. Clarifying the duties of the board, which are found on lines 57 to 65. We are adding a duty to ensure compliance with campaign advertising and finance as described in Chapter 1.12 of the code. Those are the changes highlighted for you in bold and underlined. Moving forward to Section 2, which itemizes the changes to Section 1.12 of the city code, again, those changes are bolded and underlined. And what we have here, if you take a look, is just to, again, clean up some language with respect to the board and certain requirements. We are referring to a petition for referendum. Those changes are reflected in 1.12010 and 1.12020. And then to also clarify that, I guess, previously referred to as financial disclosure statements to a campaign finance report. So those are the changes that are highlighted before you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council on this? Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2800 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2801 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2801, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting funds from the Connected Communities Grant in the amount of $34,228 for the Ann Street Village Fiber Internet Project. Whereas the Department of Housing and Community Development funds a grant to help municipalities provide high-speed fiber internet services to underserved communities, referred to as the Connected Communities Grant. And whereas the city of Salisbury Information Services Department, having a need for fiber internet service at the Ann Street Village location, applied for the said Connected Communities Grant. And DHCD has awarded grant funds to ISD in the amount of $34,228. And whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city of Salisbury. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance number 2801 reads, Mayor Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development on behalf of the city for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $34,228. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby is amended as follows: A, increase DHCD revenue account number 10500-423601-XXXX by $34,228. B, increase repairs and maintenance expense account number 10500-534302-XXXX by $3,400. C, increase construction expense account number 10500-513026-XXXX by $22,000. D, increase internet service expense account number 10500-555404-XXXX by $6,000. And E, increase salaries clerical expense account number 10500-501001-XXXX by $2,828.
Any questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2801 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. All right, so Ashley's going to take a break because she's done a lot of reading and has got some more reading to do. We're going to do a couple of things here. First, I have to correct an error I made earlier in the meeting. End of note, my city clerk highlighted this area that I was supposed to read, and I failed to do it. So I want to thank those that were appointed to boards and committees earlier. We have, if they were here, I would ask that they please rise. Olivia Wackett, Sandy Copeland, and Jeremy Wolfher. Not present, are they online? Sometimes people are online, too. Nope, any hands raised? So anyway, we appreciate their service to the city, people volunteering their time away from their family to help everyone out on these boards, and it's very important work. So if we could, even though they're not here, let's please give them a round of applause. Next, as we did earlier in the meeting, we amended our agenda to allow for public comments at this time. Andy, I don't know if you've got some people that are online as well?
Right now.
Okay. So what we'll try to do, because we have quite a bit of people that want to comment. So we want everybody to be heard, and we ask that, we're going to limit comments. We typically do four minutes per comment. We ask that if the person who has spoken before you has hit your points and you don't have any new points, just please reference that person and say, hey, I agree with this person. And if you have new points, make them, that's fine. But in the interest of time, like I said, we've probably got 20 people signed up here for various issues, not just one issue. So first up that we have is going to be Brett Hopkins.
Hi, I'm Brett Hopkins. I'm the president of SPOA, Salisbury Property Owners Association, and I'm an owner-operator here with houses and apartments also here and in Baltimore. I'm going to comment about the fire and the 12% increase on city water and sewer. We all support city water and sewer, clean potable water. We all support fire and safety. It's paramount. When you add that to schools, that's the top priority of government in effect. There's a real material impact, though, to these increases to the citizens of Salisbury. These aren't trivial. When you add it up, which we'll do here in a minute, it can really hurt some people's bottom line, which will also impact negatively the local economy. That $300 increase that's being proposed to be added to the property tax, in effect, is $25 a month. If you take $300 divided by 12, that's $25. On the typical water and sewer bill, quarterly bill, $240, that's $80 a month. You increase that 12%, that's nominally $10. You add those two things together, that's $35. If we're running typically a 6% inflation rate and people have a typical monthly expense of $1,000, that's $60 additional just because of inflation. When you add the inflation component plus the new water and sewer bill plus the $300 fire and safety bill, that's $100 additional a month that people are having to cover. For the typical person that makes $42,000 a year, $20 an hour, if they were given a 5% pay increase by their employer, that would be $1 per hour. That $1 and 160 hours worked a month is $160. That is what it takes to cover after expenses of these $100 additional completely consumes that 5% pay increase. So it's not trivial. And employers right now are struggling through a high inflationary environment. So to ask them to say, well, pay your people more, plus also pay these additional taxes and fees, the employers are going to be squeezed even harder in this tough environment. So I appreciate you having us here, and I appreciate everyone showing up to support, asking you, hopefully, to not vote for these increases. It is imperative that we try and wrap our arms around this together. And asking us to say a lot in a four-minute time span is tough. If possible, we would often like to come in and see you guys, you know, during office hours or after these meetings, so we can provide some more amplifying data, which I think would help you to understand how, at the ground-ruts level, businesses and residents of Salisbury are being squeezed. And so I ask you to vote these two measures down. Thank you very much.
My name is Richard Ensley, as you already know. I have some mixed emotions about what I have to say tonight. Some of it I think that you will find fairly easy to hear, and some of it maybe not so much. So I'll start with the positive side, and that is that I think that we all owe you all a huge debt of appreciation for the time that you dedicate to doing this job. Not everybody wants to do it. You're certainly not going to get rich doing it. And I know you have to devote hours and hours and hours, many of them probably boring, to adequately do your job. And so I commend you for being willing to do that. It's not, you'll probably get a little bit of a beating tonight, and it's not a fun thing to do, but that's what happens when you're the public's representatives. So for my part, I'd say thank you very much. There's a part that you're probably not going to like to hear as much, but you're probably expecting it, and that is why are we here? Well, we're here because we need money. Not so many years ago, we had a number of millions of dollars in surplus, in reserve. And most people probably questioned, well, where did that go? You know, one time, you know, one year back here, we're in pretty good shape, got contingencies covered for emergency happens, and now I think it is near zero. In fact, if you had any money, you probably wouldn't be coming to us to get these increases in water, sewer, and trash, as well as the fee increases. So the water, sewer, and trash, you're pretty well stuck with that. That's the result of things that happened 10 or more years ago and decisions that were made and so forth. There's nobody sitting up here now that had anything to do with that. So you all got to live with that, and so do the citizens of Salisbury. You got to take in enough money to keep water, sewer, and trash operating. Another part of it is permits and fees. We've given away a huge number of dollars in permits and fees for building permits and so forth. I'm sure you all have read probably in paper the anticipated increase by virtue of the number of building permits that have been given out, the increase in the population of Salisbury. It's, I've heard some estimates range to as much as 40%. 40%, that's a lot. That's a lot. And what's that going to do? It's going to create a need for new services? And what are the services? Well, you can start with fire protection services and police services and medical, hospital, the like, and schools. Now, I know you all don't have a lot to do with the schools and the school budget, but I mean, the people sitting in this room do because they're the ones that are going to be paying for it. One of the places that we have spent a lot of money that I personally think was unnecessary and wish had been applied to some other things is our city streets. Speed bumps, paint, obstacles placed in the middle of the street. It sure hadn't been spent on fixing potholes. There's plenty of them around town. And a lot of people have spent a lot of money on repairs to their cars after hitting these obstacles. If you want to know how many, just go out and count the number of dings or chunks out of the concrete that have been whacked. I was on the way to work one day and stopped Salisbury City people out around one of those obstacles, and an elderly lady standing out there. And so I stopped, and I rolled my window down, and I said, I hope you folks are here discussing how you're going to get rid of these damn things. And the lady said, now, this is, I don't know, it's not 8:00 in the morning, but it's not 2:00 in the afternoon either. She said, I've sat in my window and watched three cars this morning hit these things, and two of them had me towed away.
Thank you, Mr. Ensley.
I'm close.
Okay.
Apparently, it seems to be predicated on the principle of if you cause more accidents, it'll cause people to slow down. I'm not sure how that works. The $300 or $350 fee, whichever it is, and 14% water, sewer, and trash, it's not going to bankrupt me. But I think about, what about my customers? My customers are tenants. And for them, not so much. Every year, when you make a rental budget, I'm in the rental business, you have to first figure out what are your expenses going to be? And when you've got that figured out, then you know how much money you've got to take in, and that's what sets the rents. So the people that are going to bear the brunt of this is the homeowners and the tenants in the city of Salisbury. So I hope you'll think twice before you pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ensley. Andy, do we have anybody online that?
We do, we have one person.
Okay.
I think it's Ellie. Are you there?
Yes, I.
Okay, can you maybe turn up the volume? Can you, we can hear you, I think. Go ahead.
Actually, this is, I'm using my, sorry.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. I am, so I'm using a different account, but my name is Alex Filayev, and I'm a local city resident. And I just want to point out that I do appreciate you guys, everybody at the council, to do those meetings and hear the public. And I want to relay that I strongly agree with Brett Hopkins and Ms. Jinsley that previously spoke before me. I think in general, the $300 increase and the 12% increase in the water and sewer are not trivial amount of money to be paid to the city by a regular citizen. And I think it will be, especially with the inflation going on right now, to increase the water and sewer by 12%, it's just like, what a bit of money. So I do agree with them. I think, I hope you guys will consider this and come to a different understanding. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe that's it.
Next up is Dan Rice.
Hi, I'm the guy that lost the seat because everyone's here. So let's talk about it. How many of you are here because of this? How many of you are here because of the $300? That's a lot of people. Another question, raise your hand if you know 10 people that would also be mad. That's a lot of people that can't fit in the room. Now, if you asked me if I had spent, if I could spend $25 to help the fire department, I would say yes. But $300? Some people are saying it's trivial. I'm saying it's too much, quite simply. I used to be a teacher. Back last decade, there was a amendment, state amendment, for gambling that said, hey, all this money will go to education. I never saw that money as educator because they took the money away from education to other places. Is that going to happen with the fire department? Is the fire department picked because it's a service that is needed, but that money will just be switched other places instead? Also, it's regressive. Think about it, it's $300 flat across all households. Some people like me can afford it, but others cannot. So this is a hard choice. You guys have to balance a budget. I don't want to do it. I'm glad you guys are here. But when you have a hard choice, how you do it is important. Maybe there's other avenues that you could, okay? So maybe lower it, say like $60, $30. But $300, that's way too much.
Next up is James Littlefield.
Good evening, my name is James Littlefield. I'm here today as a property owner, and I'm also representing Adams Housing LLC. I'm speaking today out of concern for the economic burden being proposed on our community in the form of a 12% increase in water and sewer bills and a $300 per property fire and safety fee. Working in real estate and property management during this unprecedented time, I've been in the unique position to watch our local residents struggle during the past three and a half years. The pandemic's economic fallout has been hard on our community. People are out of work, losing their homes, and struggling to purchase groceries as inflation reaches the highest point in 41 years. In October of 2022, the City of Salisbury increased water and sewer rates by 8%. Now, the city is proposing another 12% increase to take effect this October. Compounded, that's more than 20% in one year. The median household income in Salisbury for families is 31% lower than the national median income per family. At roughly $48,000 per household per year, Salisbury residents cannot afford this increase. Furthermore, it's short-sighted and detached from the reality that so many of our community are facing for the city to suggest imposing monetary hardship on its citizens at this substantial rate. At the same time, we've seen no evidence from the city of it tightening its belt as the rest of us are expected to do. I also want to be clear that I support our emergency personnel for the essential service that they provide to our community and for the sacrifice that they make, with a special thanks to Chief Duncan's amazing service. However, based on the Salisbury City Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 2, taxes paid by city residents entitles them to receive emergency services. By imposing a tax fee, the city is setting a dangerous precedent that it can set a fee for any need the city government sees fit to impose in addition to property taxes. Imposing additional fees to residential taxes renders government agencies fiscally unaccountable to their constituents to work within the budget provided by the taxpayers. Therefore, I do not support imposing the $300 fire department fee on all city properties or a $50 fee on apartments. For the record, the fire department's budget increased by roughly $2.245 million, or 24%, from 2022 to 2023. The city's 2024 proposed budget, which is available online, reflects an additional budgetary increase for the fire department in the amount of $855,000, or approximately 7%. Therefore, within a two-year period, the fire department, I'm sorry, therefore, within a two-year period of crisis recession, the fire department budget increased a total of 31% or $3.1 million. That's a significant increase in funding for one department. According to the proposed 2024 budget and press releases from the city, this new fee would generate anywhere between $4.5 to $5.3 million of additional revenue for the fire department per year. Yet, the department's proposed 2024 budget is only increasing by $855,000. So where is the rest of the money going? Why is it accounted for in the city's proposed budget, but not the fire department's? Increasing taxes, because that's what this is, on Salisbury property owners who already paid their fair share and who are guaranteed services in the city charter is double taxation and government greed. In small business, we don't have the ability to demand more money when we get, when we go over budget. We have to prioritize what's important and eliminate excess waste from other areas of our business. Government should be no different. The city has a responsibility to steward taxes the way everyone else is expected to steward their budgets. In hard times, we tighten our belts. We don't burden the community with tax increases and fees justified by claims that there isn't enough money to support already existing departments. In conclusion, if in this situation it's determined that the county is not paying for services rendered by the city, we need to have a conversation on how the county will provide restitution for their portion of services rendered, not fend off their financial responsibilities via a mandatory fee on taxpayers who have already paid their fair share. Thank you.